Okay. A quorum being present, the meeting will come to order. Good evening. Our moderator, Gary Johnson, will not be here tonight. So I am Terri Amalini, your town clerk, and I will be the temporary moderator for tonight's meeting. I want to introduce, sorry, a couple of things before we get started. Regarding the two articles on the warrant, neither can be amended. However, there can be discussion. The articles will be decided by a simple yes or no vote. Article one, as stated on the warrant, must be a ballot vote. Article two will be done by a raising of yellow cards. Majority rules for both articles. As moderator, I will be changing the order in which we vote tonight. We will vote Article two first. The reason for this change is because the counting of ballots of Article one must be completed before we could move on to Article two. If you wish to make a comment or have a question, please proceed to the microphone and state your name and address. If you have already spoken and wish to speak again, I ask that you give everyone a chance to speak before coming up to the microphone again. And to my right, we have Jamie Manassi and Chucky Cardillo, our select men and women. And over here, we have our current representatives for the Regional School District Planning Board, Mike Canales, Patrick White, and Bill Vogt. Let's start the meeting. Chucky?
Good evening. Thank you for coming. I move that the town accept Master on Your Law 59, 5K, and National Law 59, 5M to allow the town to establish a senior citizen property tax work-off abatement program with abatements to begin in fiscal year 2024.
Any discussion? Come to the microphone, please.
Hello? Bob Van Olds at Five Yale Court.
Try it again.
Bob here. Any good? I have a pretty loud voice. Can you all hear me? All right, cool. Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could give a little bit of explanation before having a vote on this.
Mike?
So as some of you may know, the town of Stockbridge had a senior work program, but when we were going to reestablish it and get it back up and running, we realized that the town had never made an official vote to establish one. So this is purely a technicality to allow us to offer this program. The senior work program is a program that allows seniors to perform jobs that the town can use their individual skills. And in the past, I've been involved in these programs where I've had somebody act as a custodian part-time. I've had people work in the treasures office, various positions. And this would allow them to earn up to, currently state law allows up to 1,500 off their taxes. And they'd either be paid at a minimum of the federal minimum wage or at a maximum of the state minimum wage, whichever one that the select board would establish once you have passed this section of law. So like I said, we had the program in place. It was operational four years ago, and this is really a technicality of adopting this section of law, which would officially, make it official. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to vote. Let me get my counters in. Hang on. Whoa, whoa, hang on one sec. Got to get my counters ready. All those in favor, please raise your cards. I don't know that we need to count. I think, I'm going to declare it unanimous. All right. Now we'll move on to Article one. Jamie?
Good evening. I move that the town accept the provisions of Section 16 to 16I inclusive of Chapter 71 of the general laws providing for the establishment of the eight-town regional school district, together with the towns of Alford, Egremont, Great Barrington, Monterey, New Marlborough, Sheffield, and West Stockbridge, to be known as the Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District. Thank you.
Any discussion? Come to the microphone, Nick.
Nick Nadorf, 12 Pine Street, Stockbridge. Have a business in town. My wife was a teacher for the Berkshire Regional School District. Is this different from?
Yeah. We have a presentation, Nick. So let's run through that. It'll take about 10 minutes.
You ask for questions, I always have questions. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know. Yeah, go ahead.
Nobody can ever hear me, so I better see if this works. Hello? Some of us? Actually, only the school in this building. The fact of the matter is that we've got tremendous decline in enrollment. What this project is driven by is the reality that we have an aging population, we have declining enrollment. That's not just in Stockbridge. It's in all eight towns. All right? So, and we have a slide deck, which we're going to spend about five minutes on, but I'm going to give you just the summary of having a silence committee for three years. Before I start there, I wanted to thank Chuck Cardillo and Sean Stephen and Nick Fredsol, wherever Nick is, who sat on this board before, Michael and Bill Vogt, and I did. So there were a bunch of people contributed to this effort. I just wanted to thank them at the beginning. We face decline in enrollment, and that's the reality of schools. We've got, we've got, by 2032, they're talking about another 40% decline. You know, since 2000, we're literally at half the kids in high school as there is in '23, something like that. The projections from Berkshire Regional Planning are, where it really gets scary is 2040 and 2050, where you might be looking at another 20 or 30 or 40% decline. There was a study with the University of Michigan, actually this guy Jake Aberwine, who's been the project manager on this, sent this out this morning, saying that the optimal size of a high school is 600 to 900 people, according to this major study at the University of Michigan. Right now, we have 470 kids in the Monument side of the high school. There's 147 at Mount Everett. So the idea in doing this was we could save the town a little bit of money, and we could bring folks together and have the optimal size and critical mass, and that's today. Those numbers are going to drop. And most important, I think, is we could add the most vocational possible. Because let's face it, a lot of, you know, half the kids in South County either don't go to college or don't finish college. And so adding vocational is a real game changer, and it really helps those folks up in McCann and Deconic and North County and Central County. Having those types of career pathways really helps folks there. So I think the fact that Peter Dillon and the school committee members, who have come up with this plan to both build a new monument, you know, regular high school, but also add these vocational pathways, can really help the kids, you know, the kids of future generations and maybe help the rest of us find a plumber, an electrician, or, you know, someone to be a nurse practitioner as well. I don't know. Whatever the skills are. So we've got a quick slide deck that we're going to run through, and I'm going to go kind of quickly, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask them, you know. You know, one last point. Everyone voted this down. All right? This has to be unanimous. So the reason I'm not going to rush this to rush it, I'm going to rush it because it's great that we all turned out, but one of the eight towns decided to vote early and they turned it down, one of the South County towns. And that's up to them. That's their right. My guess is Sheffield will probably turn it down tonight, too. I don't know about the other six towns. But we're going to go through and have our vote, and we're going to just run through a very quick presentation, but I'm not trying to rush this presentation. I just also don't want to waste your time because, you know, everyone voted it down. All right. So we've got eight towns in the district. Keep going. Staggered declines in enrollment, rising operational costs. Amazing that the last 20 years basically seen no increase in the state to cover, to cover school costs for rural schools. So that's, so basically more of a higher and higher percentage of the school costs you pay for. Limited ability to offer a broader range of programs. Interestingly enough, Monument has 14 AP college programs. Mount Everett has three. So they want to join us, they don't want to join us, you know, it's up to them. All right, next slide. From 2000 to now, we've seen about 1,000 kid decline, child decline in the school system from 2,600 to 1,600. They're talking about it going down to 1,280, and this is across both districts. Keep going. Basically covered that. You never thought I could be this brief, did you? So yeah, so we're working on this idea of combining the districts together. It would have kept, it will if it passes, you know, it would keep the elementary schools in place in South County, so New Marlborough, and there's one in Sheffield, right? I don't even know. They would have stayed in place, and this would have only merged the high school and added the new vocational. Now remember, we're not voting on the new high school tomorrow. That doesn't happen for another year. Last year, a town meeting, you authorized the $500,000 for the engineering architecture, as did the other two towns overwhelmingly. And so once those plans come in, that's when we vote on the high school. Had this agreement been approved, it would have been contingent on the voters later on also approving the high school, but we're not doing that tonight. A yes vote and no vote is only on the merger, it has nothing to do with the new high school. However, were this to pass, we'd be merging the schools together. Conclusion already. Merging saves some money, about 2,000, almost the average of one and a half million a year in real dollars, so that means that the dollars go up year after year after year. It's literally eight towns, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, but over 20 years, 25-year, it basically pays for a bridge, even just the savings from Stockbridge, you know, and it's real, I think that, you know, that's a good way to think about it. A couple hundred thousand bucks is real money a year. It's good for students. I think, you know, the big fear here is with decline in enrollment, you can't offer as many programs, you know, especially around music, around advanced placement, around even vocational. If we build a smaller high school because these guys don't want to join us, it's probably going to be four or five, you know, vocational programs if we're lucky, as opposed to around six, because, you know, we got to, you know, we got to right-size it. And, you know, that's about it. So are there any questions you should come up and one of us can cover them? Thank you.
Any discussion?
Thank you. Mark Mills, 15 Cherry Street. This is hard, especially for South County. We've got five towns down there. They're going to lose their Mount Everett High School, which they really like, and their kids are going to have to be bused from down there up to Monument Mountain to an eventual new high school in town here. So there are some big reasons why the southern part of the county really isn't all that enthusiastic about this. And it wouldn't surprise me if we find out tomorrow that the five southern counties' towns have said no and the three up here have said yes, because it's a big challenge for them, and they lose something that's near and dear to them. However, the decline in enrollments is continuing, and as Patrick has said, it will continue. The cost per pupil is going to be going up every year without getting any additional benefit for it. It'll be stressful on taxpayers. And beyond that, we have the chance here, one way or another, we're going to have a new Monument Mountain High School at some point, whether or not it involves just the three communities in Berkshire Hills, or we get the other five along at some point. It could be a school that offers many opportunities that are not now available. And I think the technical and career vocational opportunities that could be built into this school could be a boon to the kids who take it, in reference to shortages of plumbers and electricians and all kinds of jobs that pay well and could make a good living for young people in Berkshire County. They need those skills and that training, and we can provide that in this school. And I think the five southern towns, if they're against this now, at some point may realize as their costs are going up and their kids don't have all the opportunities that would be available up at this other new high school at Monument Mountain, they may regret their decision. But I think for us in this, in this community, there's a great benefit to be had here, the cost savings, several thousand dollars a day over the course of the, of the eight communities. And it would be better to design the school and finance it, knowing that all eight towns are going to participate, so you could build the right-sized school with the right facilities. But we may be proceeding with a decision to build that school without knowing for sure if the other towns are going to come along. So I, I know the political contours of this don't look good now, but after the vote and the analysis of it, and people get to think about it a little bit, there could be another round of voting at some point, where maybe we get together on this, maybe there's some concessions that need to be made. But I think our three towns up here in Berkshire Hills should stand firm and strongly vote to support this, to show that there's really something behind it, and that may help to bring along some of the other folks who are uncertain about it. They feel like they're going to be losing something down there, but there's so much to be gained if they get on board and we create a really first-class high school for all the kids in the southern part of the county. I urge you to vote yes. Thanks.
I do want to just add, just a response to Mark. There were a lot of concessions already in this agreement. We, I sat on this and, you know, look, in the Berkshire Hills, we have like a school committee, and I know Steve Bennett, and when Steve Bennett acts, he's acting in the best interest of the kids. I don't care that he's from Great Barrington and wherever in Stockbridge, but I'll tell you this, we gave him six out of the 11 school committee seats, even though they're only 35% of the students. We gave him a safety valve, which basically made so that we could take their teacher pay, which is way below Monument's, and we could, we could bring it up to Monument's level without blowing up their budget. There were a lot of concessions already in this deal, and there are no more concessions to be had here. If we revisit this, it's five or 10 years down the road, not six months down the road, because this deal is as good a deal as it gets, because, you know, it's not like, this was set up to make it easy for the South Berkshire towns to say yes, and I just wanted to point that out, that we're not going back to the drawing board anytime soon on this if they voted down, as far as I'm concerned.
Hello, my name's Neil Weber, 22 Ice Glen Road. I've been in education for 36 years, 29 of them at Monument Mountain. And I just want to say that, you know, from an educational standpoint, looking at this proposal, what is here on the table specifically about the high school, it's a much better form of education than it would be not merging. More students are better for high school. I mean, we don't, we're not looking at 2,000, we're looking at 600. And even with a non-merged high school and with the, a new building and what we're all talking about, that would be great, but it would be better with the whole county involved, with more students. High school students, you know, not only do they need more AP courses, but they need more choices in a social situation, they need more choices for after-school activities, sports, clubs within the classroom. You'll have more choices for, you know, I can tell you right now, there are students that, I teach art, and there are students that can't get my class because their schedule doesn't allow it, because I only teach two sections of photography. And if there, if there's another course and it's not available, so if there were more students, more teachers, it just works better for them. And frankly, if you look at like the evolution of young people, high school is a perfect opportunity. We live in a small community where those students can have more socialization, meet more people that don't live next door, meet more people that they didn't go to school from, you know, since they were in the first grade. It's better for them. As they, you know, branch out into the world, it's like, it's a natural process. So I really strongly urge you to support this proposal. I do wonder, like, is this dead in the water because of Egremont? And quite frankly, as things go, maybe it's not. So I think the louder our voice is, the better for the future transitions. Thank you very much.
Jim Ballfance, Stockbridge. You mentioned that just because Egremont voted it down, that the entire process may be dead. I would hope that regardless of how many voted down, whether there are two or three or only one, I would hope the rest of the towns would try to get the state to proceed with approving the merger, leaving out those towns that do vote, but move ahead with trying to get the other towns that vote into that school district into it as soon as possible. I would hope that we could at least pursue it in that way, because as a former teacher, I certainly, and I know Bill Volk and the rest of the committee members have done one tremendous job of trying to work this out and trying to placate eight very difficult, well, not eight, seven towns at least. So I strongly recommend that we approve this for the best, for our children. That's, that's where I stand. But I hope if it, if it's one or two, I sincerely hope that the rest of the towns will get together and proceed with trying to get the assimilation of those towns. Thank you.
I'm Mary Boyce, and I live in Stockbridge. My kids all went to the, the school here. Many years ago, there was a program called the Collaborative, and all the schools in the southern Berkshires cooperated. And at Lee High School, they had the house-building program, so anyone within this southern Berkshire area could go to participate in that program. Great Barrington had the nursing program and the culinary arts program. Sheffield, I believe, had the future farmers program. And the kids who wanted to go would be bussed to the school, and they'd spend their day at that school or the afternoons. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful program. And I think the school choice might have eliminated it because of the financial, you know, if you wanted to go to that, this other school, you had to pay, you know, it just was the kind of end of the collaborative, which was really successful, and many kids participated, and it benefited each of those schools that had these specialized programs. So I, I would be interested in seeing, you know, if there could be more cooperation between the schools, that they could have students participate in those programs in other schools that they wanted to participate in. It was a wonderfully successful program, and I think if you speak to any child who participated in that, they would tell you how important it was to them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Lane at 49 Main Street. I didn't go to school in this building, but I went to Monument. I'm not going to tell you when. But when I went to Monument Mountain Regional High School, there were 800 students in the building. And, and I got a wonderful education. It's why I'm still here. I'm mostly for this, but I have a question. I'd like to hear somebody talk about how we're going to protect teachers and administration in their jobs. And are we talking about smaller class sizes so teachers don't lose their jobs? Are we talking about co-teaching models? I have no doubt that, that we can give qualitative education with more people in, in the building and that socialization that happens, but I'd like to hear somebody talk about the brainstorming that's happening for teachers and administration. Thanks.
It's up to you.
Peter Dillon, would you like to come up and respond to that?
So good evening. I'm Peter Dillon. I'm your superintendent, and I live on Church Street. The question came up, and the Regional School District Planning Board studied this quite carefully. We're, we're not particularly worried. I mean, the only person who should be worried is potentially me or the other superintendent. But in a new structure, we won't need two superintendents, right? But, but everything else, every year, some number of teachers and staff retire or, or move on, so we think through natural attrition, that we'll, we'll be able to right-size our, our staff for the, the number of staff we need. We don't anticipate, and we studied this quite carefully, any need for layoffs or anything like that. I think there would be some duplication of efforts in some of the central office roles, and there may be ways to move things around. A couple of things that are interesting, so the, our school district has a $31 million budget plus another $4 million in grants, and we don't have a full-time HR person. We don't have a full-time communications person. I wear myself a lot of those hats. So in a newly configured district, one of the payroll people in one district may step into more of a, an HR role, and then some of the duplicate positions, there may be some shifts there. But, but the, the sort of summary is, natural attrition will probably cover everything. I think this year, district-wide, we hired about 15 teachers and something like 10 paraprofessionals. So even, and last year was a pretty typical year in terms of, of replacing people, so this would happen over years. There are a number of my colleagues who are approaching retirement age, and I think that piece would work itself out.
Thank you.
I'm Charles Kenny from Meadow Road. I have two grandchildren in the district, and I'm for the merger, but I would like to just say something else to carry forward what Mary Boyce was talking about. I, I'm sure everybody knows that our human population started to increase exponentially in the late 1940s, and in particular, in this country, we had a population boom, which resulted in schools increasing, and all sorts of development ideas and all sorts of things that relied on this constantly increasing population. Now, on the other hand, I know there are people in this room. I, I came from a school that had 200 people in the high school, and I know a lot of people here have been in small classes. I would like to make sure that, assuming this doesn't go through because Egremont has decided not to do it, I would like to reiterate what Mary was pointing to, I believe, and that is, is that in the old days, when we used to have smaller classes, it still worked. And there's no reason to put a negative twist on the idea of quality. There's no reason to put a negative twist on the idea of opportunity, including, we had BOSIs, we had all different types of vocational programs that shared among the schools. We can work this out in such a way that there's still a positive twist. The children in the schools should know that the teachers and the administration and the school committee are going to be looking to continue to do everything they intended to do with this merger anyway. It should still be a positive twist, but I would vote for it. It should still be a positive twist, but I would vote for it.
Any further discussion? It's time to vote. So what I'd like you to do is, if I've been given a ballot, if you would please fill in the circle next to yes or no. Once you finish voting, you're going to bring your ballots over to the ballot box over here. Please fold them in half, just because we have so many people. And then we will count them when everybody's finished voting. So as soon as you've voted, you can just go over there. What's that? Ramasay, ramasay. If you don't want to wait for the count, you can go. I just want to let everybody know. I just want to let everybody know, we will be counting tonight, right now. So you might want to stay, and so that, you know, we'll let you know what the vote is. Because we can't end the meeting until we've counted. What's that? If you want to, you can. You can leave. And if you do want to leave, you can leave. I think we're good. Right, I should have said all that.
They can wait if they want to here, but if not, even if there's, as long as this is not, we have a couple of people here.
Right, it's going to take a while.
Yeah, we've got to let everybody vote before we can count. It's going to take a while.
Yep. Yeah, I didn't know you would have been that. Because I was going, like, what? That's all right, it's all right, it was all right. And they were good, and it really was good, it was good. It was really good. They, they were very well.
I'll call you with the results. We just voted senior workup. We can have the seniors come back and put the chairs up tomorrow. Yeah, and, and. Oh, so it all depended on us? Oh, I forgot how to count. I can only count to 20.
Has everyone voted that wants to vote? I want to make sure. Okay, last call. We're going to start the count. Thank you, Helen. Oh, I like it, I like it. This is like, I get to do it one more time, too. Yeah. I get to do it two more times. I probably need to get everyone's attention. Okay, if I can have everyone's attention, please. We have the final vote count. For yes, we have 107, no, 14, and two blanks. Seeing we have no further business, this meeting is dissolved.